I'll order the city council meeting for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three here at City Hall. Would the clerk please confirm the role?
All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Rosen, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott Health, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you very much for that. Counsel, first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? I have a second.
Second.
By Mr. God Health, second by Ms. Cullen on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. At this time, we will take citizen comments. This section is reserved for items not on the agenda. If you have comments for an item later on in the agenda, we'd ask you to hold it for that. But otherwise, we'll take comments. We'll start here in chambers and then move to anyone online. If you're online, please indicate in the chat box. Here in chambers, you'll move to the podium. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing none, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Announcements, presentations, and appointments. And tonight we have on our item number nine, introduction. Whoa, wait a minute. Excuse me, folks. I gotta get to the right agenda. I just almost reintroduced folks that were introduced last month.
Well, they're good.
They are good people. I probably should go there again. But since I gave Drew the night off, I think I better not. Excuse me, James the night off. I think I better not go back there again.
Drew's here.
Yeah.
So the, for the record, for the clerk who's probably was eyeing me, I called the meeting to order for October third, not September. But I didn't catch it, and you didn't call me out. All right. But amazingly enough, item nine, again, still is appointment. This is AB twenty-three dash one eighteen in your packet. Appointment to the Economic and Development Commission. And I'm very pleased that we have with us tonight Nick Jensen, who's gonna, Nick, if you come on up to the podium, if you would. As you're aware, counsel, we have a five-member Economic Development Commission that gives you advice in that area. And we recently had a vacancy, and Nick has graciously agreed to fill that position. He comes with a world of background that we think is going to benefit us very much on that commission. And we had a great interview and a great discussion, and I'm very pleased to have him here. I'm gonna allow Nick to introduce himself and give a little bit of his background, and then any questions or comments you may have, and then we'll move to a motion. Nick, why don't you tell us a little about yourself?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, councilpeople, for letting me come here today and the opportunity to serve in the great city of North Bend. So Nick Jensen, I live at two ninety-six Olali Place Northeast, just across the road here. My wife and two kids, we moved here about two and a half years ago. Absolutely love the area. Grew up, I'm a North Dakota kid, and, you know, just got sick of watching my dog run away for three days. So we came and found some mountains and absolutely love it out here. Myself, I work for Amazon. I've been business development for about fifteen years. My wife is an attorney also with Amazon, and then our kids go to school here in the valley. As far as economic development, I have a master's in public administration from the University of North Dakota. I did my thesis on growing economic entrepreneurial gardens, which is something that I feel really strongly about and think that we have some really cool opportunities here in North Bend to do some things to help make connections and to really support local businesses. I think we have an amazing community. We've gotten a chance to travel a fair bit, live in different places. And this is, this spot's really special. This is a spot that I want my kids to be proud that they're from in a spot that we have businesses that grow up and that people enjoy the area. So I see economic development is really, where do people want to invest? If it's investing just for a moment that they're stopping to enjoy our area and have a good memory? Or are they stopping and investing by getting housing, finding jobs, and living in this area? So happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Very much. Counsel, any comments?
Thank you. I think we met after the Citizens Academy. I enjoyed your background and your story and really excited to see you jumping in right away. And, you know, I'll share with you, I mean, I've been living here in North Bend sixteen years ago. Then you were being here, I got involved as well, starting parts, buying permission, all that. So I'm hoping that's your trajectory, especially with your background. So welcome, Nick. I look forward to all the degrees of the table.
Thank you very much. If my wife is watching, I'm just doing this, I promise.
That's always how it starts. Mr. Scott Health.
I gotta tell you, based on that conversation, if you talk to my wife, she'll tell you she's a North Bend city widow.
Anyone else comment, question for Nick?
Thank you, Nick. It's always appreciated when citizens get involved and care about the city such as yourself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. I really appreciate you stepping up like this, and I love your demeanor and your humor already. So bring it on. We're all ready. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, it adds to a few of those comments. I think most folks at this table kind of reflect that trajectory. And again, I'm particularly proud that you attended the Citizens Academy. We've, we did well with that, counsel. We've gotten a lot of folks that have gotten more involved coming out of that class. And just as the opportunity, I'll plug that we will be having that, the second Citizens Academy this coming year. We've not set the dates quite yet, but we'll be getting that out in the near future. So watch for that for next year. With that, I'll ask Mayor Protem Cullen if she would make the motion.
Motion to approve AB twenty-three dash one eighteen, confirming the appointment of Nick Jensen to position number one on the Business and Economic Development Commission for the remainder of position number one's current term, set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? I've got one. It reminds me, as we read the motion, I did want to point out, it is my intention that we will be coming back to you towards the end of the year, as it indicates, to reappoint Nick to the full term. We have another appointment or renewal at that time to do as well. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that. We're not only planning to keep him for two months.
My wife is okay with that, so.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, counsel. Thank you, Nick. Get to work. Introductions. Item number ten on our agenda. This is AB twenty-three dash one nineteen. This is a public hearing, ordinance amending the taxes, rates, and fees schedule regarding the school impact fees. Ms. Burrell.
All right. Good evening, counsel and mayor. Annually, the city adopts new school impact fees to collect when residential units are permitted. The city passes this payment back to the school district. This year, the capital facilities plan identifies a reduction in the single-family impact of sixteen thousand two hundred and two eighty-five to nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eighty-nine, and a slight increase in the multifamily units from five thousand five hundred and thirty-four and fourteen cents to six thousand three hundred and ninety-one forty-seven. This new rate would be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. The overall reduction is mainly due to a stagnant student generation rate predicted by the district. And Ryan Stokes is here from the Snoqualmie Valley School District, and he can answer any questions you might have.
Very much. Ryan, did you want to add anything? I'll wait and see if counsel has questions. If there are other members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please approach the podium, or if you're online, indicate in the chat box.
Your Honor, we have a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing. I will open the public hearing at seven eleven. Thank you. And again, repeat, if you are a member of the public and wish to speak on this item, please come forward here in chambers or indicate in the chat box or star nine if you're on the phone. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here in chambers? Is there anyone online?
No one online.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. I've still got it at seven eleven, so less than a minute. Okay. With that, does come through finance, I'm assuming? Would you, would you introduce the motion as our finance leader?
Motion to approve AB twenty-three dash one-one-nine, an ordinance amending tax rates and fee schedules relating to school impact fees as a first and final reading.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. God Health, second by Ms. Cullen. Counsel, discussion? Mr. God Health, anything?
No, I'll leave it to everybody else to take a look at it. I mean, it's interesting that we did go down on the impact fees. And if I recall, we, there's a bond, you're coming forward with another bond coming forward pretty soon, too.
Now the question.
Actually, you may, see what you did? You got me started. Blame the mayor.
That's great. Great question. Good evening, everybody. Ryan Stokes with Snoqualmie Valley School District. Yeah, it is interesting. The COVID impact has reduced the student generation rates, and our demographer has looking, is looking at that and seeing kind of a stagnation of that for a little bit, which dropped those rates. We actually will be having some community outreach meetings in October and into November to discuss the results of the, our citizens committee recommendation for capital improvements. The committee recommended the rebuild of North Bend Elementary, Fall City Elementary, and Snoqualmie Middle. And so we're trying to get a broader conversation going with other community members who might be interested in giving us their perspective. And so there'll be a meeting. I'll get the dates out to the council so that you guys can, are welcome to attend, obviously. But we're gonna have a meeting at Fall City Elementary, at North Bend Elementary, and at Snoqualmie Middle, and then an online option to allow people to come and take a look at the building and see why some of the spaces are different than some of our newer buildings and how that impacts education, the density of portables and what that looks like at a school building, and some of the drawbacks of that. That kind of, those were some of the rationale and priorities of the citizens committee that we formed as far as making those recommendations. And then just having small, a small group discussion with anybody who wants to attend to get their perspective on that. That, that will then be shared with the school board, and the school board would then take action on the recommendation of the committee, and then they, that would launch into discussions on, you know, depending on the outcome of that, the timing and nature of a future bond proposition, when it, when it might come forward or not. So no current plans to put something on a, on a bond proposition to voters, but we're trying to gather more information on that to, to give that info to the school board to make that decision.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen?
Yeah, it was actually really interesting reading your plans or future plans, but and I liked the taking down the old schools because it's more fiscally sound than fixing old schools. But my question is Snoqualmie Valley School District is more than just North Bend. And I'm wondering, do we communicate or work with the other cities when we're determining impact fees, specifically Snoqualmie and Fall City?
We propose the same fees to all the jurisdictions. So we actually have also City of Snoamish, although there hasn't been any house construction there since I've been with the district. But we, we present the same fees to King County, City of North Bend, City of Snoqualmie, and City of Snoamish.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one leaping forward, the motion before you is to approve AB twenty-three dash one nineteen, an ordinance amending the taxes, rates, and fees schedule relating to school impact fees as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We go on to introductions. We have item number eleven, AB twenty-three dash one-two-zero. This is a motion authorizing the purchase of IT network equipment. Mr. Davenport, you're on.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion AB twenty-three dash one-two-zero is a motion to authorize the purchase of network equipment to replace our aging servers at our life cycled every five years. Our servers, although they've served us very well, are approaching six years, and they are starting to show their age. More importantly, they are also becoming more and more in danger of not being able to receive regular security updates. And therefore, I urge the passage of this agenda bill because it is crucial to the technology operations of the city. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions before we move to public comment? Seeing none. At this time, if you are a member of the public, wish to speak on this agenda item, if you're here in chambers, please come to the podium. You're online. Please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. Seeing no one moving in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott Health, believe this came through you.
Yes, it did. Motion to approve AB twenty-three dash one-twenty, authorizing the purchase of IT network equipment that serves the City Hall, Public Works, WT, WWTP, and various employees of the city in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand.
Second.
A motion by Mr. God Health, second by Mr. Jocelyn. Mr. God Health, anything, Dan?
Yeah, it came through the committee twice. The first time, apparently, the number was not the right amount that we needed. And actually, surprisingly enough, it didn't go down, it did go up. But we did have conversations about making sure we have money in the reserve and making sure that with the increase in the costs of these things, that we take a look at our reserves to make sure we continue to have the funds to be able to replace equipment as it comes. So I do recommend it passed. They did a good job explaining, and it was a good conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Jocelyn, Dan?
Simply that, yes, it was vetted. I appreciate very much eyes on this sort of thing and looking for it. It's the cost of doing business. It's critical infrastructure, critical of the city. Past its expected life cycle is what we're running on now, and it is part of a long-term, multi-year plan to keep the city's IT infrastructure, you know, safe, secure, and accessible. So thank you to all involved, and I will be supporting the measure. Thanks.
Yep. Anyone else? Seeing done, the motion before you is to approve AB twenty-three dash one-two-zero, authorizing the purchase of IT network equipment that serves City Hall, Public Works, wastewater treatment plant, and the various employees of the city in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item twelve. AB twenty-three dash one-two-one. This is a resolution approving conceptual plans for the Taylor and Riverfront Parks. Mr. McCarty.
Thank you, Your Honor. So these conceptual site plans are the culmination of over a year of pretty extensive public process that was led by Site Workshop. He's our urban design consultant that's led the effort on the development of these plans. We do have Ryan Storkman and Sarah Canipid from Site Workshop online tonight, if there's questions about the plans. This public process was quite extensive, and it included multiple meetings with the Parks Commission, multiple public workshops, specific engagement meetings with Kiwanis and Rotary, Snoqualmie Tribe, neighbors of both parks, a public survey to obtain online feedback, Department of Natural Resources and Parks from King County, and a final review and recommendation by the Parks Commission. So based on all of that public input, Site Workshop brought conceptual ideas into the conceptual master plans or final park plans that you see tonight. The Parks Commission provided a recommendation of approval of those plans at their August twenty-third meeting. Together with that recommendation, they provided some additional recommendations for counsel to consider through future process regarding these site plans. And those include potentially changing the name of Riverfront Park to Riverfront Natural Area to reflect the more passive use of this area. Considering invest, further investment in the renovation of the train depot as a central focus of William H. Taylor Park, considering lighting needs for pedestrians along McClellan Street, alternative surfacing options along McClellan Street to better enhance visitor experience, consider interpretive signage that shares both the history of William H. Taylor and the tribal connection to Mount Si and surrounding lands. These recommendations of the Parks Commission, we didn't feel necessitated revisions to the site plan. So we're just carrying those forward as a part of this agenda built to you tonight. The one revision that we did make to the site plan following the Parks Commission's recommendation was just to gray out the private property that's surrounded by William H. Taylor Park, just to reflect that that is private and not a specific part of the plan unless and until the city were to acquire that property. And I want to finally just stress that these are conceptual plans, so they don't in any way either promise or lock the city into making specific amendments based on these plans. That's all subject to future planning, development of engineering plans and funding. So with that, we recommend approval of these plans as presented, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Counsel, any clarifying questions before we move to public comment?
Just, yep, thank you very much. Just to be clear, and Rebecca, we had a conversation just earlier. In my packet, I have a black and white version. Everybody else has the color version. And mine is, that was disconcerting initially to me because it didn't allow the clarity of what I was hoping to see. I would love to see the wording removed on the home, the property that we're, we're just discussing briefly, to have that wording completely gone from that map that I have in front of me. It says the wording's on one twenty. And potential future acquisition, property acquisition. I would like to strike that. That's possible.
I think that would be an amendment to what's being, so this was just time for questions. So if you'd hold on to that, we'll wait.
Happy to hold.
Take that up a little bit. Thank you.
Yep, I'm done.
Thank you for that introduction, Mike. That was great. And thank you to the consultants. No, there was a lot of work that went into these concepts, as you said, over a year's worth of design. And there was a lot of outreach. I'm wondering if somebody, maybe the consultant side or yourself, could speak a little bit more to the actual resident communication in both of those neighborhoods? What, how were they approached? You know, what was feedback and so forth? If you could just tell us a little bit more about that particular part of the public outreach, that'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah. So the beginning of the outreach, and I think in multiple times afterwards, we sent letters to all property owners in proximity. I think it was probably within three hundred feet, which is our usual notification requirements about the site planning process. We also reached out more specifically to the neighbors surrounding Riverfront Park and set up a meeting on-site with those neighbors to talk about the potential plans, get their ideas and input. And Site Workshop, to the extent possible, worked those comments and ideas into the development of the master plans.
So do you think from that experience, it was positively received?
I know that the neighborhood, particularly surrounding Riverfront Park, started out of the process with a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns about maintaining the floodplain capacity, the natural character of that area and potential impacts to their neighborhood. Through the process, I think we heard a lot of their concerns, and I believe incorporated those concerns into the plans. And we have not heard more recently from the neighborhood about further concerns. So I hope that we've successfully incorporated those concerns into the plans.
Cool. And to that end, the point you said earlier about these are just conceptual plans, they can change, things like that. Is it fair to assume that if more resident or neighbor input comes in, that can actually impact the process? As far as, as we get further closer down the road.
Yeah, certainly. These plans, again, are just for the development of future plans for capital improvements, and those capital improvements would go to counsel for consideration of funding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Or clarifying questions, yes?
Yes.
It, I believe the city is currently moving to build a fence along the northwest boundary of that subject parcel. Can you share us, share any insight or information on that and plans and what you see going forward?
Can you just speak?
Yeah.
Please be clear about location and park.
William Henry Taylor Park, the parcel spoke to earlier by Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, so the intent of that fence is to better clarify the property boundary. Currently, there's a driveway within the park area that provides vehicle access to a garage on the private property that the park is surrounded by. And there's a lot of spillover, and the purpose of the fence is just to better establish the location of the park property and to make it more evident to the public that that is actually park property and not private property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, does the owner of that property have any control in any of the, the look of the fence, any of the designs, and anything, any say whatsoever?
We haven't gotten that far in the
Okay.
process.
Thank you.
You? There are no further clarifying questions? We will move to public comments. So if you're here in the audience, we would invite you to the podium. And again, online, we'll take up online after anyone here in city chambers. Live up to three minutes to speak. Please begin with your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm gonna apologize in advance. I'm recovering from Bell's palsy, so if I sound a little slurred, I apologize. My name is Christine Olson. My family owns the property that you guys are speaking of. I live at two one four East Park Street or two one four Ballarat Avenue South, whichever you want to call it. Our family during this whole ordeal was, been very disturbed to find of the planning because we weren't part of the, any of this. We weren't asked. We weren't sent a letter to have a thing with our neighbors to talk about any of this. And so when we see a drawing, which you emailed me after I reached out to see that our property was saying future property, we've told you guys, we've told Si View, our property is not for sale. You guys will have to take it from us. It's not for sale. So to see that it's written in there, you, um, our family has owned the home since the seventies, since before the train station was even built. The road used to go all the way down where the sidewalk is, where the gravel driveway is, used to go all the way around. That has always been access to that property. Even when you guys redid the sidewalk, the way it did, the guy that was in charge or whatever, he, I was explaining that he did it that way so that we have access to get out of our home and get out safely, and that the people walking through the park can go like that without any problems between vehicles or anything else. Like I said, we are all of a sudden just now finding out that you guys have these plans. And I, I'm disturbed that Riverfront had all this input, but our family never did. I know there was like a postcard sent to my elderly in-laws about it, but not like a letter, let's sit down, let's talk about it. So like I said, this really bothers me. I'm concerned about the fence. I get it. And my husband does have some vehicles out there that he shouldn't. I get it. I've been on him. I don't know. You guys are all married. It's kind of hard to get yourselves to do things. You ask him a million times, he'll do it, you know? But as far as our, you know, the access, it's been the access to our home forever. I'm concerned about an emergency, a medical emergency. If you guys build on Ballarat and you do all that, I mean, how is an emergency vehicle supposed to get to us? How are we supposed to access and back out safely? So I mean, the whole plan, I think, is poorly done because you totally excluded us. And I just think that's totally unfair and so not okay. We feel very violated. We feel very stocked. I've had council members snooping around in my bushes. I mean, it's a I mean, it's enough. I've reached out to certain people. I've reached out to mayor. I mean, we, we are, I have been under so much stress all over the past six months that I've gotten, you know, so this going on with me. And so I would like to ask that the council doesn't approve. I think you guys need to rewrite it. You have not taken in the whole concept of the people that live there. And we feel very, like I said, discarded. My mother-in-law born and raised here, Mount Si graduate. My husband born and raised here, Mount Si graduate. Our son moved here, we moved here when he was two. Mount Si graduate. Our family's been here. I've been on the PTA, PTA council, and I've done this, so I just need to know that I disagree. And it's poorly planned, and I would like to tell the council, I just think it needs to be rejected because, I mean, more input needs to go into it. And I'm available if anybody wants to talk to me and ask me more questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else here in chambers? We have anyone online?
No one online.
Thank you. Staff, I know that this is a very contentious issue. Is there anything you need to add?
I would like to respond to the notification, so I do apologize that you weren't brought into the process earlier on. Our notification is based on property ownership, and I understand that you've recently just purchased the property from Mr. and Mrs. Olson, your in-laws. I, we did send a letter to them. I personally also contacted Mrs. Olson and talked to her on the telephone about the plans. Encouraging you all to be engaged, and so from that perspective, we've done what we can to reach out. And I apologize if you weren't brought into that process earlier. We certainly would have liked that.
Thank you. Hey, with that, first thing we need to do is get a motion on the table. I think this came through Community and Economic Development. So Ms. Miller, would you introduce the motion?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve AB twenty-three dash one-two-one. A resolution approving the conceptual park plans for William H. Taylor Park and Riverfront Park as a first and final reading.
Thank you. A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jocelyn. Ms. Miller, would you like to speak to the main motion or move to your proposed amendment?
I'd like to move to the amendment.
Right. Now, if I could ask you to introduce your amendment.
Okay, amendment please to strike on page, do I have to go fully into the details, one page, one twenty? Can I tell you one twenty to remove all verbiage relating to property acquisition? Please strike that.
Councilmember Miller may clarify, your motion is to amend Exhibit A.
Okay, thank you.
To modify that language, as you've stated, referring to property acquisition. Potential future property acquisition to strike that language from Exhibit A.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion that we have is on Exhibit A for the Taylor Park property to strike the wording potential future property acquisition. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Godhealth. Ms. Miller, your motion?
That's, if I want to speak to this, I think we've got to be very careful how we engage with our public all the more for, for what this wonderful person in front of us talked to. And tonight, I, I really think we could have done a better job. So I hope in the future, when we go forward with these planning, the parks, that we do all we can to reach out to those, to all people that are affected by the parks, the neighborhoods involved. I think that's where I stand, and I will always stand that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Godhealth, do you want to add anything?
I don't have any to add, but I have a question or concern. I thought at one point during either work studies or something else, we asked specifically if this resident was willing to sell it, and we got the positives to it. So how did we get this so wrong? Is really my question. This might not be the place to get it, but I think as a council, I'd love to understand how we got this so wrong.
Mr. Miller, would you like to address that?
Yes, I think that when we originally, I originally, actually Lisa our, our city attorney had contacted the Olsons when
Please, please clarify which family, because we don't want to confuse Ms. Olson. Thank you.
We, we contacted the elderly Olsons, the father and, and mother-in-law of Mrs. Olson. And they'd had some contacts with, with those folks, and they said, we'd be willing to talk about it. We know, I don't think we ever represented that we have a deal, they're in contract, or that we're any further than having conversations. And they seemed to be at least open to it. But then I called them after Lisa had talked to them. As we were moving further along with the plan, the plans became a little more clear as to what was happening. And asked if we could have coffee, and they said, we're intending on beading the property over to their son and daughter-in-law, and when I called them, and after I had that conversation with them, I did give them a call, and Mrs. Olson also reached out to me. I talked to her husband, and I talked to her. And they didn't have interest in selling it. So they had a, a, a much more clear position of not wanting to sell than the elderly Olsons had had. They weren't willing to sell on the spot, but they said they're willing to talk, and so that's as far as we got.
I guess my curiosity is this went through two different council. At what point did we know that this resident did not want, and I am under the impression that even the, the original owners were not positive in wanting to do it and actually gave a negative to moving forward on this.
We knew that, I knew that after Mrs. Olson here, and, and I had talked, and her husband and I had talked. He still was willing to meet with me to talk about it, but over time, I think they became less interested. And that was right when we were going through the final work study with the council to make final selections. When they came up with that, and I had indicated to Mike that I thought that we should not show that property as a part of the park property because they are not interested in selling.
Well, I, I think that one meeting, I can't remember what month that was. Do you have a clarification on what timeframe that was, that, that, that work study? I think you, you
I could look back at our schedule, but we did have a work study on it where there were some options presented.
Yeah.
And you had a pretty robust discussion.
I, I myself feel there's a due diligence here we have, have to think into because I recall being, was very clearly stated, at least I remember that to be the case, that they were very interested. And oh, no, no big deal, no problem. And, and that kind of confidence led me to be thinking, hmm, maybe something did change. But that's not the truth. What has happened is that these people have felt bullied and directly approached. They have felt stalked. Her, the stress level has been insurmountable, and I don't think any council member in there, our city should be stalking or okay, alluding to stalk, but beyond their property, asking questions, just back away and leave these people alone and just do your job.
Daryl, would I saw your hand?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I too recall very confident positioning from, from city leadership that these property owners, as well as the property owners on the Riverfront, River Park area, were highly motivated. Which is where my buy-in came at, specifically on the Riverfront as well. Talking with one individual, so I'm not going to say this one individual is the voice of all. But it was clear to me that this particular individual was not as highly motivated as what I was sold to. So what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing happening is a kind of a replay of the Ulid. Where I think we have certain precedences set on how we communicate with the public, but maybe we need to revisit those because I don't know. And I, and I hear your, your feedback, Mike, that you, you did your best, you talked to the property owner. So maybe there's something more that we have to do as a city insofar as if we're going to do anything that directly impacts residents specifically, we got to overhaul how we're doing it, because we had this whole nightmare with the Ulid on this particular example. That's why I was joking in the work study. Be careful if, if, if folks don't respond, that that means they're supportive of it. But in this particular instance, on both of those particular sites, we were, in my opinion, oversold that there was motivation here to make this happen by those residents. So I've been voting in support of this all along. And so now I'm a little bit concerned because I'm hearing different testimony, not only from this, this individual here, but also somebody over at Riverfront. So I'm scratching my head as to what the next steps are. So that's where the clarity for me comes in, that if we approve these plans, these concepts with the changes that Ms. Miller has put forth, does that protect the property owners there, number one? Number two, because these are just conceptual renderings, we can move forward with improving something along the river. But if we determine that the trail through that little forested area, for example, is not warranted or wanted, that's something that can be abandoned or discussed at a later date. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so just to be clear, we have the language in here, Ms. Rosenberg, that will protect this particular resident. We can approve the, the renderings to get things in motion for the other improvements that we want to do, because we all want to see both parks, both areas improve, but we want to make sure that it's not a burdensome or a negative impact on those folks that live in that community. So I guess my point is, just to clarify, if we pass the renderings just one more time, it doesn't mean we're necessarily going to force these people into some decision. These concepts can change over time, correct?
Completely correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Jocelyn?
Yes, good evening. It seems to me that what happened in this case is the property changed ownership. And the city is not in the practice of reaching out to people who rent properties that may be impacted. Is that generally correct? And so the renters, and while this was being pursued, the owners were reached out to, and there in fact was conversation between a number of people, but that's part of what led us to this point. I don't think there was misrepresentations. What I remember, that council member Elwood, is that the city administrator stated that the former owners were willing to trade in kind. Were the city to identify some other property of equal or some, you know, it was left unclear, but that's what I heard, was that they were willing not to sell, but to engage in a conversation such that there may be a transfer of property that would result in this transferring to the city. That's what I recall. There wasn't any pitch, there wasn't any, they're in strongly in favor. That's my memory, and I think that helps explain. Because there was a factual change, and, you know, who owns the property drives a lot of how the city behaves, and that's part of what happened. In this case, I want to speak to the amendment. This process has been going on for years. The city's invested heavily. And consultants have led us, and the council did in fact adopt this vision because that's exactly what it is. None of it, it can be implemented absent funding and further action by council, not a single part, not a single representation, none of it. And what it is, it's a vision, which is an activity that we as a council regularly engage in. It's part of our mission to do so and to paint a path going forward, and that's what I see before me, potential future property acquisition in a conceptual plan is what we're being asked to adopt, and I certainly will be in voting in favor of it because of all kinds of reasons. This, if, you know, the, the rest of the plan is in fact centered around this vision, and if the vision changes, then I would expect similarly that's going to change the whole plan, and we'd be casting it back to you know, we, this is the result of four different plans and amalgam and picking and choosing amongst those pieces that we all thought would be most appropriate. And we'd like to see brought forward, and that's what we're presented with and asked to adopt as a guiding principle going forward, and I'm fully supportive of this vision for this city moving into the future. And I don't, for me, that isn't impinging on current owners. They've been heard. No one's going to, you know, this isn't imminent domaining anybody. But rather, it's, it is saying, look, let's move forward with this as a concept in hopes that at some point that's where we land. And that's again, that's what I think it's our job to do, is to paint a vision for this city and what we want it to look like in the future. So I will be voting against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, your last one, if you had anything? Again, let's, let's keep, keep in mind that we are talking about the amendment, really. We, I'd like to keep the focus there. Ms. Godhealth?
I, I appreciate what my fellow council member says, but my concern is when we started this vision and when we asked about this vision as a council, we asked specifically if these owners were amendable to it. And I believe that my opinion and maybe some of my other opinions on this conceptual would have changed, and I would not have during that point in time added that to this conceptual if they were not in agreement. I know there's a lot of ands, ifs, or buts. I don't know when it was sold. I've also heard that, you know, different things that they said that it was going to be beaded over to their kids and that the kids would be making the decision. So I don't know what the truth is, but my concern is it was sold to us based upon them being affirmative, and we felt good about it. And I think as a council, we were excited about it because we felt it was something that was positive. I feel concerned that we now have different information and concern as to when that information was found and not delivered to the council.
Yeah. Mr. Elwood?
I just want to pick up on a point. Thank you for your position and offering that, Mark. Appreciate that. You, you said key words in there that I want to impress upon the public, and Ms. Olson and all those listening eminent domain. This, this council has not been interested in taking anybody's property for anything. Conversations have come up. We have had conversations about in-kind training. In fact, even on the River Park, we were told that there was maybe some potential to with one of the property owners to swap some property for the front versus the side or something along those lines. But I just want to be crystal clear, at least from my position, being on the council for two terms, eight years. Neither council that I've been on has ever had any appetite for eminent domain. Taking anybody's property is, is not anybody's focus. We don't want to do that. We're North Bend. That's not neighborly. So I just want to be clear that I haven't sensed from this council that there's been any action on that front. So I just want to press, press that point. But I will also say that I agree with what you said, that this is a vision. You know, we, we do have a brand, we do have a statement, we have a mission and vision, and enhancing, preserving and enhancing our outdoors is critical to who we are as a community. That's why these particular concepts are good. They speak to what it is that the city's about. It speaks to the enhancement and preservation of natural resources within the city limits. So having the confidence from staff that if we approve these concepts tonight does not mean that the, the trail through River Park is going to happen, does not mean with or without the friendly amendment here from Ms. Miller, that Mrs. Olson's family will be harassed anymore. All of that is not going to happen, then I am supportive of the concepts because this is speaks to part of our mission of preserving and enhancing North Bend to be a highly livable outdoor recreation just east of Seattle. But that's why I asked for so many clarifications that when we approve this, it's just a concept. We do have other steps to go down the road. And we will obviously be entertaining more feedback from those residents that are possibly concerned at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've, we've thoroughly vetted that one. The motion to amend is page one-twenty, Exhibit A, to strike the wording on the exhibit, potential future property acquisition. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Cohen, I did not hear, did you vote or, or not voting? Not voting. So we, I heard three ayes. Motion carries. The wording would be struck. Thank you. And now to the main motion. Motion is to approve AB twenty-three dash one-two-one. Resolution approving the conceptual park plans for William H. Taylor Park and Riverfront Park as a first and final reading. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much, counsel. Again, Ms. Olson, sorry, this has been a difficult process. Next item on our agenda, counsel, is item thirteen, AB twenty-three dash one-two-two. This is a resolution authorizing adoption of the shoreline and critical areas elements to the twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan. Ms. Burrell, you're back on deck.
All right, thank you. So overall, we are proposing minor amendments, amendments to our shoreline and critical area, two different elements of our comprehensive plan. This is for the twenty-twenty-four update. Staff solicited input from multiple agencies, including the Department of Ecology, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Natural Resources. Staff solicited input from multiple agencies, including the Department of Ecology, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Natural Resources. The tribes and Planning Commission and the public also provided input. The city tasked two consultants to review the elements to ensure that they're in compliance with best available science. And best management practices. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the elements on August 16th, 2023. Following a public hearing. SEPA review will be conducted with the comprehensive plan, updates overall, and an ordinance will be brought back. To you prior to adoption of those amendments. The staff report on page 165 of the council packet discusses in more detail the amendments that were made. And they're also shown in track change with the planning commission recommendation. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Very much, council. Any clarifying questions before we move to public comment? Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. This one should be an easy question and I apologize that I'm bringing it up now and I didn't think to send it ahead of time. In, in rereading the, the document again this morning. I just want to clarify that my interpretation specifically of. Enhancing and accentuating public access to riverfront property. And, and property rights and so forth, private property owners. There's nothing in this document that is saying. From a goal standpoint or to set policy in motion similar to some neighboring communities about. Acquiring private property or forcing act, public access upon private, private property owners that live. On, on waterways. Is that, is that correct? And I know that's a very poorly worded question because again, I'm springing it on you as it's coming in my head.
That's correct. I mean, we didn't add any new goals or policies related to that specific effort. And the tribe actually, Snoqualmie Tribe actually commented that we kind of started out. It wasn't ordered, but the goals and policies started out with. The economic benefits of the shoreline that we might receive and they, they thought we should have the. Environmental benefits first. So we reordered it based on their comments. Again, not in a prioritized order, but. But that's it. There was not a lot of substantive changes. At all, so.
Okay, so nothing changes private property rights, ownership on this and sets any policy in motion. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing any other clarifying questions. You're a member of the public and wish to speak on this item. Here in council chambers, please approach the podium. If online, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. I've up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Seeing no one moving quickly to the podium. Do we have anyone online?
No one online.
No one online. Thank you. Ms. Miller, back to you again as this came through CED.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve AB 23 dash 122. A resolution authorizing adoption of the shoreline element and critical areas element updates. For the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan as a first and final reading.
This motion. Second by Mr. God Health. Ms. Miller, anything bad?
No, not, not exactly, but just maybe one little thing. And here it goes. That the crucial part about this that I want everybody to know is that there aren't a lot of heavy changes to it. So I feel confident going forward. So I want to vote for this all the more.
Mr. God Health, anything?
Just thank the staff for the hard work on it and I hope it does pass. I think it's done well and. It's good.
Thank you. And council? Mr. God, Mr. Elwood.
I agree. Thank you, staff, for keeping us crisp and frosty, frosty with all the changes that come at you from all the different directions. I do applaud that in this particular document, I did see more of that environment first, environment forward, which I do appreciate. Being in here, so that, that's something that. Anybody who reads this should, should feel a little bit better about. So thank you for that and thank you for all the hard work on this. I hope it does pass.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion before you is to approve AB 23 dash 122, resolution authorizing adoption. Of the shoreline element and critical areas element, updates for the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan. As a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much. My reading of the agenda is we have reached the end and we will move on to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. Mr. God Health, start with you.
Thank you. First, I want to do a shout out to Drew. I talked to him. I appreciate he did. As of one of the small group that did make it to the Eastside Fire and Rescue FAC meeting in person. And it was notated by multiple staff members that he was there and it looked really good. So. Want to thank you for that and appreciate your effort there and look forward to working with you more on that. We all, last time we talked, we kind of talked about the fact the fire danger, it looks like the water. That has come down has helped. So a lot of the burn bounce have been lifted. And with that. Mark, how are we looking? I'm assured assuming that we're still under. The ordinance right now, so I want to give you a shout out to allow people to understand where, what you can and can't do on your lawns.
Sure, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, Alan. The fire danger is down from where it was a month ago, but the river is also down. The months of May and July had such warm weather and dry weather that it caused an early snow melt. And so the rivers were flowing really fast in May, June, July. And what's just happened is. Is we haven't got that recharge yet. We've had some wetter days, but we haven't had any big storms in September. We haven't had. Two-inch rainfall event, another two-inch rainfall event. It's just been kind of drizzly. We've had. Some rain, but not enough to recharge the river. The river's still flowing below. The minimum in stream flows that Washington State Department of Ecology sets unfortunately. And this is a time of year when the salmon are spawning. Below Snoqualmie Falls. So we're still on stage three. I anticipate we'll be on stage three for two, three, four more weeks.
Thank you for that. And I also point out, you know, a lot of people take a look at our water ordinance and. This year, actually, if you heard, Seattle's asking people to conserve. The water. So it's not all just about here. So it's, it's something as a community. I came from Southern California, a little different there, but. You know, being good stewards to our community and our environment is really important. So with that, everybody, don't know. We're getting towards fall. It's getting dark early. I know people are still out and the kids are out. Please watch safely out there and drive safely. Because the kids are out there and it's getting dark early. That's all I've got here.
Yeah, in regard to water, you are correct. The Cascade Water Alliance and Seattle Public Utilities have both come out. Asking their customers to be cautious. We're glad to see they're joining us. Ms. Miller?
Today, I'm going in a totally different direction, but I love what you said. Today I had the great enjoyment and emotional. Roller coaster ride, if you will, by going down to Burien to witness the graduation of our new police academy, academy of cadets. Now, this individual is born and raised here. Her name is Kelsey Sizer. And I'm very honored and privileged to know the family as well. But I, I encourage all council members to understand the importance of going to these graduations. I think there's one coming up in November. November 4th, 14th, excuse me. And I will plan to be there and I think it's important and I value what these young people. Male, female, whatever, whatever you are, you're stepping into these positions and these roles that are extremely important and I, I think we should be supportive of that. So that was my day and it was a great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you. I'll try to get through my list pretty quick. Thank you to Snoqualmie School District for coming again for the impact fees. Appreciate your testimony and your, your feedback and. All the due diligence you, you put forward into the impact fees and so forth. And years past, I've been a vocal, I've been outspoken about my frustration with portables and, and things like that. And so I'm glad to hear at least there's some conversation about what can we do to fix that? What can we do to remedy that? And I would encourage anybody who has any interest in, in either portables or the future of our elementary schools to show up at the events. That were talked about today. Please show up and, and give your point of view. So thank you for that. The second thing I'd like to say is that. I, I am. Concerned on resident engagement specifically when property owners are directly impacted. We, we've had that happen a couple of times now and, you know, city staff is following protocol. And they're doing their job and they're doing it the way that they were instructed to do it. But what I would like to put forward is at least next year, we have one of you lucky winners will be leaving the city. To really reevaluate our public outreach on things that directly impact residents. I know we have our protocol. I know. As you said, Mr. Jocelyn, reaching out to renters is not quite the right approach. But there has to be something done a little bit more with a little bit more care. I don't know what the answer is, but I think it should be a topic that's addressed. Next year at least. The third thing I'd like to say is, is I'm so happy fall is here. I'm so happy to see the rain. It's too bad that our rivers aren't filling up and so forth, but please embrace the fall. I think this, this October is going to be a wonderful. Wonderful month. So do have fun out there. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn.
Just the smallest of clarifications. I did not say that reaching out to renters is not the right approach. So what I said was that it's not part of normal protocol. And so I support your general. Tenet that, that, you know, we can look at those things. Other than that, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thinking of public health and safety at our meeting today, I reached out to Eastside Fire. And Rescue, thinking of Lahaina and knowing that we're in a mountain town. At high risk of fire and what is our evacuation plan? And they, because really it's I-90. And so I'm hoping that we can look into that. How do we alert people? And just to be mindful of potential fire. Hopefully it will never happen, but you never know. And that's where my mind is. And yeah. I'm glad it's October.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, anything for the administration?
Nope, I do not.
Couple of. Regular update notes here. We will be having an Arbor Day celebration and community tree planting event on Saturday, October 7th. That's this Saturday. 1:00 PM at EJ Roberts Park. Prior to this event, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, a local group of citizens are hosting. Oaktoberfest, which is a celebration of healthy ecosystems. More information about these events are available on the community calendar on our website. The next fall food truck series at Si View Park is this Thursday, October 5th, between 4:30 and 7:00. Can enjoy dinner in the park with different food trucks each week through October 19th. Finally, the yard waste recycling program will be held this Saturday, October 14th. From 8:00 AM to noon at Public Works. Those attending are asked to use the Public Works entrance off of North Bend Way. And finally, as we close. Feel I want to make a comment related to this evening and. Variety of the comments that were made, some misunderstandings I feel that the Olsen family experienced and. And some of the thoughts and how that process played out. But we are in the midst of an election season and that raises tensions in a lot of ways. And there are also. Executive session issues that we need to be careful about. And so I'm not going to really say much about it. But I do absolutely support. Doing the best we can in regard to public process. I would absolutely always invite. Good, solid ideas on how to do that better within the means of the city. It is disappointing in regard to Taylor Park process, as was mentioned, over a year in process. Innumerable. Public meetings held, invitations done, notices into the paper and all of our. Outlets, things that I don't even understand frankly, things like Twitter and Facebook and all of that stuff. But I'm certainly at, at a, at a loss for, for better ways. I think there were some unique. Circumstances around some of the information here. And for that, that was difficult. And we'll look to do better. So again. Happy to hear ideas. Because we don't have it right always and we're certainly always looking to change. With that, council, a reminder that we will be having a special council budget work study. Tuesday, October 10th, here at City Hall, 7:00 PM. That is next week. And we'll be looking at what adjustments need to be made. At this time, we're going to move to executive session. To discuss property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42 dash dot 30 dot 110. 1B. And collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 144. There will be no action following this executive session. We do expect to. Be approximately 30 minutes. And with that, we will then therefore end recording.